Good evening. The Jackson Public School Board Meeting is now called to order. Board members, we have five members present, therefore we have a quorum. Ms. Figures is on his way. We have all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll move.
Second. Ms. Hilliard has moved. Ms. McGuffey is second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Next, we have all had the opportunity to review the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the July 16, 2024 regular board meeting minutes and the July 26, 2024 special board meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Harrison has moved. Ms. Hilliard is second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Dr. Green.
Thank you, Dr. Sebag. Good evening, board members, and to all of our team members and community members who might be watching us live stream. We'll begin, as we typically do, with some video highlights.
Just to beautify the school and to help it look better for the community and just to build up the future generation around.
Staff, scholars, and community members are here helping us prepare for the first days of school.
School entrances enhanced, classrooms prepared, and school grounds beautified.
It starts right here with the cleaning process. When they come in, it's clean, it's welcome. You want me?
It makes you feel like it's important that they value it, so you should value it too. So the students, when they come here, they should feel like people really care about their learning, people care about them developing, and people care about their school.
Volunteers participated in a JPS beautification day, all to make JPS scholars feel welcome on the first day of school. And while schools were getting a makeover...
And just like that, here we are. We're back at it.
JPS educators assembled to prepare for the new school year.
We've tried to lay out how we think we'll stage the work over the next five years.
As the new school year begins, so does a new five-year strategic plan.
There's a broader set of outcomes for scholars' development and for developing and encouraging all of our stakeholders.
How JPS scholars will benefit from the new plan and why the community is encouraged to participate.
As a community, we have to hold ourselves accountable to the debt we owe to the district and to our scholars.
With a district-wide goal to inspire JPS scholars about their possibilities and potential.
Get your head right.
Followed by a family reunion and a warm welcome for new and returning team members at the district convocation.
They not like us.
They not like us.
They not like us.
You are not like us.
We are a family. And yes, there is joy, unspeakable joy, all around us.
We who have been given the knowledge, the skills, the commitment that runs all through our veins, all throughout our bodies, we have a certain power that simply will not let us fail.
First day.
Welcome back.
And the summer break comes to an end as JPS scholars return to the classrooms.
We are going to have a great year. I just want to give you the official greeting for the new school year.
There are some great things about to take place at 833 West Mabel Street.
We're excited about the power of people and possibilities. We have a brilliant staff that's ready to teach our kids, to make sure that our kids have everything that they need.
Thank you.
Please visit our website at jackson.k12.mst.us. Follow us on Facebook at Jackson Public Schools, on Instagram at JPS Student Voices, on Twitter at JPS District, Comcast, Channels 18 and 19, and YouTube at youtube.com/JPSITV.
Okay, folks, let's give our team a round of applause for that video. Oh, my goodness. Can we nominate these for shorts? Yeah. Indie independent films or something? Surely, there's something we can, more that we can do with these videos. This is pretty amazing. So lots of things to celebrate. I am, I was not prepared to speak to convocation because it seems so long ago already. But I do really need to pause and thank all of our team members for so much planning and thought and attention to detail that went into the 2024 convocation and with the theme of the JPS family reunion. I've heard from so many people, folks who were there and people who watched it afterwards or livestream, who have commented that this was the best one yet. And while I'm torn, was it actually the best? Or does it just feel like it's the best because it was the most recent one? I don't know. But it's clear that so many people were moved and encouraged and felt like we struck the right tone with the convocation. So again, to all of our team members who helped to create a magical, a really memorable experience, we want to thank you. Let's give that team a round of applause as well. Board members, and just like that, we're back to school. As everyone knows, today was actually the second, excuse me, the second day of the new school year. And although the team is continuing to work through some challenges, we've had a really strong start to the school year. The senior leadership team and I, along with some of our board members, have been out visiting schools over the first two days, and we've witnessed lots of smiles, as you can see, including our own. Lots of smiles, JPS team members who are going above and beyond and out of their way to address some of the challenges and just to create the kind of spaces that our scholars deserve and to bring to life all the conversation, all the intentionality around joy. And I've certainly seen tons of joy over these last couple of days. And with these first two days behind us and with several of the kinks that we're working through and working out, I've already started pushing and challenging and other team members challenging one another and themselves. It's time to focus more intently on bell-to-bell, high-quality instruction. We've done lots already, even leading up to the first two days, just to get our scholars acclimated, many of them to new schools, whether it's moving on to middle school, moving on to high school, or just shifts in the boundaries of our schools. But it's all, it's time to get down to work and to really focus in on instruction. And so we've been starting to give a bit of that feedback. But, you know, those are just a couple of my own reflections. I want to invite our deputy superintendent, Dr. Cormac, who will provide some more highlights and reflections on these first two days of school. Dr. Cormac?
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Green, our JPS community. We're elated to share with you some reflections on our first few days of school. As Dr. Green mentioned, we have been out as a central office leadership team. We have hit nine schools so far over these past two days, which represents about a quarter of our schools. But taken together collectively with divisional coaches, our curriculum, and teaching and learning teams, climate and wellness, we have had all schools represented with a presence. And I've been getting a rundown and some reflections from each of our leaders about what it's looking like out in JPS land. We're very elated and excited that teaching and learning is occurring from day one. We've heard really positive reflections and seen with our own eyes just the sense of urgency that's capturing our positive and respective, respectful culture that we're living into. And you can see just an assemblage of some of the pictures from these first days. We have been able to witness that real positive team culture. As Dr. Green mentioned, we've been working through some challenges, but real human's work has been done to provide comfortable classroom spaces and the community effort that went forth to make certain that our spaces reflect the kinds of learning environment that our scholars deserve. So again, we want to thank all of our community partners and team members who have committed their hands and labor and resources to spruce our buildings and just to make them shine in ways that I think really reflect our best. As the board has been very supportive of our effort to just improve scholar safety, we have launched the Evolve system in each of our middle schools. And the report from principals is that that is happening in a real seamless fashion. We even were witnessing changes even today that helped to improve the intake process, which is happening smooth at both middle and high schools. As scholars had their binders out front, things that might trigger the system, and they've worked through that successful intake and have even trained up staff. And so we actually got to observe that this morning at Bailey Northwest. And so that is happening in a very seamless fashion. We also have met as a collective to just reflect on some pinch points around enrollment, facilities, and transportation. And as a team, reflected on challenges experienced yesterday that with very quick feedback was improved upon today in terms of both bus arrival times and departure times and pickup and just an alignment of the systems. We are really pleasantly supportive of our uptick in enrollment, which is quite exciting to be able to reflect on some real improvements to our, even as we integrate and migrate our student information system to a new system. We have seen an uptick year over year in terms of the number of enrolled scholars, which is quite promising to reach our projections. So we're very excited about that and what that's meant for our systems, which depend upon reliable information about scholars' addresses and phone numbers. I want to share with you a reflection. I met this afternoon with our instructional coaches for the middle school network and a really positive reflection and a quote from a first-year educator at Powell Middle School. This particular educator, Ms. Washington, is a first-year sixth-grade teacher, and she expressed some trepidation on her first day. But after having received some very positive and warm feedback, both from her principals and the instructional coaches, she reflected today, "I am in my element. I'm here, which is exactly where I need to be." And when we can make those kinds of demonstrations of a growth mindset, I think it really just speaks to the power of our people and the possibilities unleashed when they receive feedback, get the support, and get pushed to be better every day.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cormac. Appreciate you for bringing those highlights and reflections and as well for bringing the new teacher's voice into the room. You know, those of us who are kind of old heads and have been at it for a while, we forget what it's like to be in your first year, first year as a teacher, first year as a student, first year as a principal, first year, whatever it is that you do. But it's really important, and that's an important perspective, that we should always mine the folks who are experiencing us, our communities, our scholars, our parents, our system, all of this for the first time, just to make sure that we're seeing things with clear eyes and not just that we're better than we were or different from where we were, but for what it is right now in the moment. So thank you, sir. I so appreciate that. All right, gonna move on. Just a couple more comments that I'd like to make, board members. Really pleased to report, as Dr. Cormac alluded, really pleased to report that we've had a higher registration count leading up to the start of this school year as compared to last year. And we're currently at 15,364 scholars registered out of the projected 16,718. So whether this means, you know, that we're simply getting better at registering the scholars who will be with us, which in and of itself is huge, and we're really, really thankful for that, or if it means that we're leveling off or perhaps signaling an uptick in the enrollment, I don't know. You know, I wish I had a really, really good crystal ball because I desperately want to know what that, what the truth is. But either way, it feels good, and it's a win for us. And it has allowed us, again, as has been stated already, allows us to plan differently and to ready ourselves for scholars in ways that we simply cannot without that information. Now, you know, we're much farther ahead than we've been years past with this, and I'm excited by that. I do want to still lift up because, over the last few days, we've had hundreds of scholars to register for school. It has put a strain on our transportation, on, you know, systems in general, especially on transportation, though. Many of our scholars who have registered in the last two days of school, but even over the weekend and Friday, Thursday, Friday of last week, you know, we weren't prepared to transport those scholars. But many of them require transportation. And so our team, to their credit, have been really working hard to turn on a dime to provide that transportation, but it has created some major challenges with timeliness and just all of the organization and ensuring that the folks are going in the right direction and on the right buses and all that sort of thing. So the team is working through that, and obviously, we're updating our rosters for transportation and for bus routes and communicating more with families and coordinating between schools and transportation teams and all of that. But it's created some real pain points, and so these first couple of days, I know, have been tough for all involved, folks on buses for much longer periods than we anticipate, and buses picking up later or dropping off later and all that sort of thing. So I do want to just name it publicly, name that this has been a challenge and that we're still working through. We may actually need to add some routes, which, of course, since we were right there, with the number of drivers for the routes that we had, could mean that we will have some open routes, routes without folks to cover them. And so we'll have to address that. But I would say that these are good problems to have, that we've got more scholars to serve. And so ultimately, just asking for continued patience as we work through this. And we do want to encourage all of our parents, and I believe we've had this on our social media, but continue to, want to continue to encourage our parents to download the Versa Trans My Stop, the application, and download that to their phones so that they can easily track the location of their scholar's bus and the estimated time of arrival, the ETA to bus stop stops and back home and all. So that's that with transportation. It's a continued work, but we're excited to see upticks in the number of scholars here. And lastly, air conditioning. Aye, aye, aye. I want to speak to our continued battles with facilities, especially as it pertains to our cooling systems. And although we've definitely, 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 absolutely seen many improvements in many of our schools, the extreme heat just causes our systems to run nonstop. And so those systems that we've been able to repair over the summer and leading up to the start of the year, we're seeing some failures in some of them where we're having to go back out and reboot them or adjust something or make some repairs. And so we do have, I believe it's five, I'd ask for that, is it five additional vendors, companies that are supporting us and helping us to basically sit on these systems in these schools and monitor them and respond as quickly as possible to get systems back up. But it has caused some concerns, obviously, as we're experiencing some record heat these days. So we're continuing to work through that because, of course, no one really wants to hear that things are better if you're sitting in the classroom or the space that's hot or simply is not cool. And so we're necessary. We're installing portable cooling units, and we've still got plenty of those, and we'll purchase more when we need them, as well as fans to help to circulate some of that cooler air in those rooms. We're providing more water. And our principals are exerting their own leadership within school spaces to move some teachers and scholars to cooler spaces in the building where that's possible. It's not always possible, but where it's possible doing that. In some cases, though, we've had to be a bit more insistent with teachers who have taken the time to set up their classrooms and understandably don't want to leave their classroom for another space, you know, and wanting to be troopers and battle through it. But we, obviously, we want everyone to be safe. And while we understand that inconvenience, we want everyone to be safe. So we'll continue to work with principals and our teachers and everyone, even as we're getting the systems back up and running. Thankfully, we have been able to get our systems working again fairly quickly without requiring major additional repairs. At schools where we've already invested just recently in new systems or invested in some substantial repairs, we brought those companies back to address the system failures, and we're holding them accountable for those systems that shouldn't be working, that we should be able to count on right now. And so we're in talks with them as to what that's going to look like going forward. And so just want to name that. And again, I'll say, just like with our transportation, we know this is not optimal, it's not ideal, and it's downright unfortunate in some cases. But we do appreciate the continued patience that we've seen from so many people, scholars, team members, and even some parents who understand that we're working through and trying to be responsive when we have these system failures, to respond, be responsive and get them back up, and we appreciate that. That concludes my remarks for today. Dr. Sebag, board members, I will take any questions that you have or follow up on any of those items.
Thank you, Dr. Green. It's always an exciting time of year. I also, well, I'm going to invite board members to share reflections. I've been traveling, but it's been, I'm so appreciative of the time spent at convocation or in the community strategic planning meetings or first day of school or graduation. And so board members across the board have been at all these events. And so I'll invite you all to share any reflections over the past week.
Well, I'll begin by saying that I'm on three chat lists. From Jim Hill, we got three, we're so many, it's three. And I sent it to all three, and they absolutely loved everything about our convocation. So it was really well received. And they especially liked "They Not Like Us."
I think the year has, from my indication, things are going quite well. I'm sorry that I was not able to participate in the visits to the schools and everything, but due to personal issues involving family, family, my brother, I haven't been able to get to those places that I would love to be because the classroom is one of my favorites, and I enjoy seeing what's going on. But I want to congratulate everybody for the work that you are doing. I think it's going to be an outstanding year, an outstanding, successful year. And it's elementary program, Dr. Sebag, is very impressive, you know, and I'm pleased to see the growth of that program because I know that that's going to contribute to the success of our, of the entire district. And we are going to be moving on up to that A level that we are striving so hard to obtain.
Yes, ma'am.
Congratulations to each of you for all of the hard work that you do.
I'm just been on 10 already, so I don't know what the school year is going to have. The, I've been, the convocation was really nice, and the same day, I think it was the same day of the cleanup where I was able to get into two schools to help with the cleanup, both Peoples as well as Key. Key, and just beautiful, just beautiful spirits. Everybody just seems like they're just charged and ready to do this, even though the challenges that we face, like with Peoples, you got two schools that were basically merged into one. They have their challenges, but they're excited. They're excited about what's to come. Like, they're excited about the new school year. So and over at Key, they have their challenges, challenges with the building outside, you know, the surroundings, the community. But it gives us opportunity to bring the community in and help us and be a part of what we need with JPS. And then the summer graduation, participated with that, with those scholars, just to see those young people push through whatever their challenges were and still cross that stage, even if it was late, you know, long as it wasn't never, it was still late. It was late, but they got it, and it got it done. That was just exciting to witness that and be a part of that. And even on yesterday, to be in Forest Hill and be able to welcome those scholars. And, you know, every one of them that seemed to be kind of lost or not know what to do, it was like they were coming in from Wingfield. I was like, what school are you coming from? You know? And that was, that was just heartwarming because I just wanted to reach out and just hug them like, okay, you're good, you're home now. You know, like, we're gonna, we're gonna work through this together. We're gonna work through this together, and we're gonna get you what you need to get to, go where you need to go, and do what you need to do because we're gonna make this the best school year that we have all seen. So that was really exciting to be a part of. I had forgotten that I had signed up to go with Dr. Green to Bates, so I missed that visit, but still, I think I was where I needed to be on yesterday at the times that I needed to be there, which was really good. Even for parents, some challenges, like you said, with even registration, it may be on their part, I don't know. I was trying to get an understanding of what was happening, like, a lot of them were saying, well, I've already registered, I did all of this over the summer, and I'm still here. I think communication, just being there to just say, it's okay, we're gonna work through this together, we're gonna make it better, you know, and we will get there, you know, we will get there. That's all I, I'm just excited about the school year. I think you all have done an amazing job so far, and if you can only go up from here, I don't know where we're going to end when the school year is over with.
Tell it. The themes that you have chosen for the convocation as well as strategic plan, I think the themes say it all, you know? I think very relevant and appropriate.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Bring back the village. I love it. Yes.
Couple of quick observations. I mean, I'll echo everything that everybody said. Convocation was fantastic. I've been stopped by teachers at three different schools to tell me how much they liked it. And so, and I would say, I enjoyed it myself. It's always fun to see our elected officials sort of like rigidly move to our bands and things like that. So, you know, little unique joys in there. I have had the good fortune to be able to go to most of the schools that Central Office, I think, has visited so far. And I kind of wanted to shout out two things that I've seen that are real encouragements. I am still, you know, people have heard me say this a lot, I'm still the short timer here. I've got one thing to compare this year to, and that was last year, nothing before that, right? And so year on year, the, I know we've still had facilities challenges. I know I've been in some hallways where they didn't have cooling and some, you know, this side of the hallway is cool and this side is warm and all that stuff. We've got, we've had hiccups, but from my perspective, the facilities are a lot better year on year. The issues are more isolated, the responses are quicker, and on top of that, some of the work that's been done at these schools is so apparent. It's apparent on the face of it, it's apparent when you get in. It's apparent on the face of it, it's apparent when you get in. I'm, I'm thinking of even a place like Pecan Park where we visited yesterday, right? It's a construction zone on the outside, and one of the reasons I really wanted to go was to see like, does this really work? Was that functional? And the answer to that is, yeah, they're doing a great job. The administration there is doing a great job of making sure that scholars have an entryway and feel welcome and all that. And then they get in and you can see all those changes. You can see these cleaned up stairwells and the brand new sidewalks and all these places that just look so much sharper and better than they did year on year. And it's going to be, it's going to be unbelievably great when it's all wrapped up and finished. And that's going to be a party that we need to all have, right? We all got to come to that one. But just applaud that team for the way, for the, the kind of environment that they've created within that school. And so I just kind of specifically wanted to point that out, how, how much they're doing with what could easily be a real hardship that, you know, sidetracks you. And instead, it feels great in there. The other thing I would say has really impressed me, I know we had a lot of either principals moving to new places or first time principals. I think the tone of especially those, those principals in new places and first time, you know, first year principals has been so impressive. They are locked in, they are intentional, they are, you know, giving people feedback in real time at spots. And that, and that's just been really, really encouraging, especially in our middle schools for me. So, you know, going to Cardozo, going to Powell today, seeing the principals in those places really take control of those schools, I applaud them and I think it's going to make the world of difference for some of their scholars. The, the last point that I'll make is we have a lot of kids, and you touched on this, we have a lot of kids that are either moving up to middle school, and so they're sixth graders and they were going to be in new school no matter what, or even within elementary schools where you've got, you know, where you're pulling from multiple places into one new home. We're dealing with that. We're looking at Wingfield coming, you know, Wingfield scholars coming into Forest Hill. We've got all these places where we're, where we're marrying up our families and our, and our communities into new spots. And, you know, I know one of the things that we hear a lot is like, oh, you can't do that, there's going to be friction, you never know. It's been really joyful and smooth from everything I've observed. And I think that deserves applause and recognition.
The power of the people. Thank you, board members.
All right. Well, I'll, I'll just shout out one more department, and that's the Communications Department because I've experienced this all virtually and have had severe FOMO for the last week. So, thank you. And I just, I did do again, board, I just think it's, this has been great, it's a, it's a high level engagement across the board. We're very appreciative of the leadership throughout the district to create these spaces and opportunities for us to come and be a part of these efforts. And so I also think it sets the tone for us for the rest of the year as well. We're stronger when we show up together and have each other's back. And so thank you again for all of this. And Dr. Green, thank you for a great report.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Well, let's move on to our information action items. Board members, we're going to, we're just going to take these up as a slate. These are pretty straightforward.
Dr. Sevak.
Yes, ma'am.
Don't forget the public participation.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Ms. Williams. We do not have any public participation tonight, but it's a good reminder that for community members who would like to make public comments, they should email their requests to Ms. Rosalyn Williams at roswilliams@jackson.k12.mms.us, no later than 4:00 PM the day of the meeting, or appear in person in the boardroom no later than 5:15 PM the day of the meeting. And so, of course, the board appreciates public comments, listens to them, and certainly invites them. So board members, we will now, again, thank you, Ms. Williams, we will move on to our information action items. We will take these up as a slate, these are pretty straightforward, so a number of renewals. So we'll first invite Mr. Sherwin Johnson up, our Executive Director of Public Engagement, to request the approval of the renewal agreement between Vitac Corporation and JPS. Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, Superintendent, Board President, members of the board. On behalf of the JPS administration, I'm requesting the renewal of Vitac Corporation closed captioning services. The service is used for closed captioning for our live streaming of our school board meetings on our YouTube channel, JPS ITV. Closed captioning during live streaming is crucial for ensuring that individuals who are hearing impaired can fully participate and engage with the event, fostering accessibility for all.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Board members, any questions, comments about this request? Thank you. Next, we'll invite Dr. Anthony Moore, our Executive Director of Advanced Academics, to approach the podium. He is requesting the approval of the renewal agreement between the Mississippi Arts Commission and the Jackson Public School District. Dr. Moore.
To Dr. Green, Superintendent, Dr. Sevak, Board President, members of the board. Administration recommends approving the renewal agreement between the Mississippi Arts Commission and Jackson Public School District. The Arts in the Classroom program provides an overview of the aspects of the Mississippi whole school program through professional learning opportunities and site business to model schools. AIC introduces arts integration strategies to schools that serve pre-K through eighth grade students. The concepts are taught through hands-on experiences that connect the Mississippi College and Career Ready Arts Learning Standards and the Mississippi College and Career Ready Standards. All content is research-based and created by educators, artists, and cultural institutions. And Dr. Sevak, just wanted to take a moment and say this was a year-long process that started last year around this time, and I wanted to signal three individuals in the room who were instrumental in that, Ms. Woody, Elementary Superintendent, Network Two, Mr. Hill, who was a principal at Green Elementary last year who led the charge, and Ms. Clark, who assisted in development of this grant.
Great, thank you, Dr. Moore. And again, I think I failed to mention it is for Green Elementary.
For Green Elementary.
Great. Board members, any questions, comments? Thank you, Dr. Moore.
Thank you.
Next, we'll invite Dr. William Merritt, our Chief of Staff, up to the podium to request the approval of the network agreement terms of use with Power School in the Jackson Public School District.
Good afternoon, great evening to Board President Sevak and other board members, Dr. Green and JPS community. The administration is recommending approval of the network agreement in terms of use with Power School. Power School is our new student information system, and so this agreement will allow the data to be shared with school status more specifically, which is our communication that we use for data and parent, and parent and student communication.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Board members, are there any questions or comments? I will just affirm that school status is working.
It is working. I don't want to hear I didn't know.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. All right. Next, we'll invite Dr. Grigsby, our Assistant Superintendent of Elementary, Network One, to request the approval of the renewal agreement between the Mississippi Arts Commission and the Jackson Public School District at Casey Elementary.
Good evening, Board President, Dr. Sevak, Board Members, Dr. Green and JPS family. The administration is recommending the approval of the renewal of the existing Model Whole School Grant for the 2425 school year at Casey. This grant allows the school to continue providing scholars with arts-integrated instruction and professional learning opportunities for teachers.
Thank you, Dr. Grigsby. Board members, are there any questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is the request to approve the renewal agreement between Beth Roach, our Education Consultant in the Jackson Public School District. Dr. Grigsby.
Yes, so the administration recommends that the memorandum of understanding with Beth Roach, Education Consultant and Jackson Public School District, to offer the International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program and Leadership Support for Obama Elementary be approved. The rationale for this is that the administration is recommending that a consultant be retained to help support with the transition of the administrator, as well as to support IB Coordinator Development and support a sustainable PYP program.
Thank you, Dr. Grigsby. Board members, any questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to item F, the request to approve the renewal agreement between the Authentic Institute of Montessori in the Jackson Public School District. Dr. Grigsby.
The administration recommends the approval of the memorandum of understanding with the Authentic Institute of Montessori and Jackson Public School District to offer professional development services for McWillie Elementary. This partnership provides direct, aligned supplemental professional learning opportunities for the staff members at McWillie.
Thank you, Dr. Grigsby. Board members, any questions or comments? Dr. Grigsby, it's my understanding this will be, we will leverage the professional development days to use this training?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, board members? Okay, thank you, Dr. Grigsby. Next, we'll invite Dr. Smith, our Executive Director of the Office of Teaching and Learning, to approach the podium. She will request the approval to award partial fulfillment of RFP 2024-17 to McGraw-Hill and Curriculum Associates.
All right. Good, good evening to President Sevak, Board Members, Dr. Green and JPS family. The Office of Teaching and Learning is presenting for information action approval to award and partial fulfillment, McGraw-Hill and Curriculum Associates. McGraw-Hill provides our ELA curriculum for our middle and high schools, and Curriculum Associates provides high-quality math instruction for elementary and middle schools.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Board members, any questions, comments? Hearing none, thank you. We will move on to item H and invite Dr. Cormack, our Deputy Superintendent, to the podium to request the approval of award RFQ 2024-01, the Fahrenheit Creative Group.
Good evening. The administration recommends the approval of the Fahrenheit Creative Group LLC to offer project management and communication support on behalf of the JPS Heinz Early Learning Collaborative. They submitted the best proposal and they will continue their work in the district supporting communications management for our pre-kindergarten collaborative.
Thank you, Dr. Cormack. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to our next. Thank you, Dr. Cormack. We'll invite Dr. Regina Scott, our Executive Director of School Support, to approach the podium. She, her first item will be the request to approve award RFP 2024-09 to Infrastructure Partners and Edu Service CT3 for professional development and coaching support for school and district leaders.
Good evening, Board President, Dr. Sevak, Board Members, Superintendent, Dr. Green, JPS family. The administration recommends review and approval of the lead partner support contracts in response to RFP 2024-09 to offer professional development and coaching support for school and district leaders to Edu Service CT3 and Instruction Partners.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Board members, any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to our next request. This is the request to approve award RFP 2024-10 to Kids First Education LLC and the Kirkland Group for Professional Development and Coaching Support for Teachers. Dr. Scott.
The administration recommends review and approval of the lead partner support contracts in response to RFP 2024-10, professional development and coaching support to teachers to Kids First Education and the Kirkland Group.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Board members, any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Next, we'll invite Ms. Margaret Purnell, our Executive Director of Business Services, to the podium. Her first item will be the request to approve the renewal agreements between Central Access Educational Data Services and Fund Accounting System for Data Security in the Jackson Public School District. Ms. Purnell.
Good evening to Board President, Dr. Sevak, Board Members, Superintendent, Dr. Green, colleagues and JPS family. The administration recommends approving the Educational Data Service and the Fund Accounting System Data Security Agreements between the Jackson Public Schools and the Central Access Corporation. The Education Data Services Agreement and the Fund Accounting System Data Security Agreements are annual contracts between Central Access Corporation and the district to provide the SAM Spectral System Information System, the student system information, the student information system is the data manager for all student records in the district. The Marathon Fund Accounting System provides all financial services functions for the district. SAM is the district current student information system, one of the two approved by the Mississippi Department of Education. Marathon is the district current financial system. Also, there was one question, I believe that the board had asked in regards to central access, and the question was, is this the solution we've identified to clear standards associated with record keeping and corrective action plan? Also, if so, how well is it working? And when can we anticipate that we will clear this standard? No, central access is the legacy fiscal system that the district uses to maintain its fiscal system, its financial records. The district must maintain the central access system to do the migration to the new system that we are implementing. The new system, Tyler Technologies, NIMIS, has no association with the corrective action plan, nor does central access has any association with that for clearing the student record standards, which is residency standard six or standard eight, which is for permanent records. Are there any other questions?
Okay, okay. Sorry about that, board members. Thank you, Ms. Purnell. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to the request to approve the monthly financial report. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening again. The administration recommends that the board approve the preliminary monthly financial report for the month ending June 30th, 2024. The financial, monthly financial report contains the statement of fund balance, the budget status report, the bank reconciliation report, and the district maintenance cash flow report. Some of the highlights from the report under the general funds, page four, the, for FY20, for the preliminary fund balance as of June 30th, 2024, was roughly about $16 million. That is a $6.7 million lower than our position in FY23. But this is what's at the end of the fiscal year, and we are not there yet, so we haven't closed out. So this is before, this is, that was after we had closed out for FY23. I don't know if you all, you all shall have that, we did update the, the information because the prior monthly financial report did say something different, but there is an updated one that should have been sent out. Also, the expenditures currently exceeds revenue approximately about $6.6 million. Our sixth-insection revenue exceeded the budget by 105%, which was great for the district. Under special revenues, the child attrition still holding his own, we have roughly about $13.4 million in that fund balance. There are several special revenue funds that we have done receivables for. You may notice on the state, on the statement of fund balance, there are no negatives there, but we have cleared those right now because we're doing the receivables for those at this point in time. But at that, but the negatives did amount to about $16.3 million. Our funds withdrew on July 12th of the month, and that draw at that time was $6.9 million that we covered at, at that time. We've also made another request as of yesterday for roughly about $400,000 dealing with our indirect cost that's related to our FY24 expenditures that we have. And then we will be making our July request in August, on August 12th, for the remaining of those funds that needs to be taken care of at that time. On the budget status report, as of June 30th of 2024, these are preliminary numbers, of course, we have collected $186 million of our $200,000 budget, so we at 92.7% currently. The expenditures, we have expended $192.6 million, we at 96% of that budget. So that's showing where our collective versus our expenditure is $6.6 million that I addressed earlier in the, in the report. The all other funds we have, well, the total funds, basically, we are, we are at, we've collected about 81.3% of revenue, 77.3% of expenditures have been collected as of preliminary June 30th numbers currently. On our bank reconciliation report, all of our bank statements are with board-approved depositories, and all of our bank statements have been reconciled appropriately and promptly as as of May 31st. On the cash flow, the ending cash, cash balance was about $1.8 million compared to $1.6 in FY23, and that's roughly about 14% increase from the prior year's position. Other Management Key, uh, Performance Indicator Report, headlines from that report, of course, it's still, everything's preliminary. Overall revenue expenditures, we are $5.4 million less than where we were last year, which is about 2.9%. Overall expenditures year-to-date is $1.5 million more than what it was last year, 0.95%. Our Avalon collections year-to-date is approximately about $639,000 less, less than what it was last year. And our personnel cost is, um, surprisingly down a little bit, $94,000 less than what it was, uh, last year. And, uh, the overall, I must, on the, on this information, I must state, we did use the final numbers that we use, that we ended with on last year, just making that comment. And these are preliminary numbers, um, before closeout. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Purnell. Board members, any questions, comments? Okay, thank you. Um, that completes our information action item agenda. Um, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
One second. I'm just trying to clarify, Ms. Williams, the, the, this is on me, um, just because I didn't, I didn't see, so I'm asking board members for backup here. I didn't, I didn't, I looked at an early draft of the material, so I didn't see CT3 and Kirkland, and I just want to make sure board members got the materials in advance. And kids first. Okay, I got a thumbs up from, from.
I pulled them up off of that.
Okay, I'm, I missed them, that's, thank you. Um, so we got coverage on that. Um, okay, great. Um, so, with that affirmation, is there, is there a, um, motion to approve items I through L, information action?
A through L.
A through.
A through L. Thank you.
A through L. So moved.
Mrs. Thompson has moved, Ms. McGuffey a second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Williams. Um, all right, next we'll move on to our consent agenda items, finance. Uh, all of the, uh, the board said the opportunity to review the materials previously and ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second?
Ms. Hillard has moved. Dr. Harrison a second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next, we have our consent agenda items general. All board members have a chance to review the materials previously and have had a chance to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion?
Second?
Mr. McGuffey has moved, Ms. Hillard a second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next, we have our consent agenda items personnel. Uh, board members have had the opportunity to ask questions of the board, of the administration previously. Uh, are there any further questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second?
Dr. Harrison has moved, Ms. Hillard a second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Board members, there is no executive session tonight. So, you know what that means. We'll take a motion to adjourn and have we started on time, which I was late. Ms. Hillard has moved, Ms. Thompson a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for all the great work to get schools started.